Okay, I'd like to call the Garden Grove City Council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call and roll?
Councilmember Broadwater. Councilmember Doe. Number Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Protem Jones, sorry.
Here.
Mayor Dalton.
Here. Okay, we'll have the invocation by Keith Jones, Public Services Director, and the pledge of allegiance by Councilman Jones.
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like Keith Jones to make the presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Tonight, the Garden Grove City Council presents the monthly Business Spotlight, highlighting outstanding businesses within the Garden Grove community. This evening, the spotlight shines on one of the city's most popular local restaurants. Would Kevin Sheehan, General Manager of Buca di Beppo, Italian restaurant, please come forward? Buca di Beppo opened its doors in Garden Grove on February 22, 2001. The restaurant chain, known for its quirky decor and upbeat atmosphere, embodies the Italian traditions of food, friendship, and hospitality. Dishes enjoyed for generations in villages throughout Italy inspire the menu, which features both northern and southern Italian favorites. Roughly translated, Buca di Beppo means Joe's Basement, and pays homage to the first restaurant that opened in 1993 in the basement of Minneapolis Apartment Building. Since that time, the chain has grown to 83 locations nationwide. On March 12, 2010, with a bowl measuring 20 feet in diameter and 3 1/2 feet in height, Buca di Beppo and Garden Grove successfully broke the Guinness World Record by creating the world's largest bowl of pasta filled with 13,786 pounds of freshly-made spaghetti. The massive bowl positioned by the restaurant's main entrance at 11757 Harbor Boulevard was filled via a bucket brigade made up entirely of Buca's employees. Six chefs supervised the food preparation and production of the enormous spaghetti bowl that also included more than 100 gallons of marinara sauce. The previous world record for the largest bowl of pasta was 9,767 pounds, set by Wananevia Restaurants on March 28, 2009, in Doha, Qatar. With all of Buca di Beppo's many restaurants, the International West Locale was chosen for its key location just one mile from Disneyland Resort and proximity to other major Southern California attractions. The pasta from the record-breaking event did not go to waste. It was donated and repurposed by the local agricultural community. Additionally, over the next year, Buca di Beppo has pledged to donate 10,000 pounds of boxed pasta to shelters across the nation. At the local level, the restaurant has built strong relationships in the Garden Grove community. They are an active member of the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce and have provided free meals and in-kind donations to several nonprofit organizations, including the Miss Garden Grove Scholarship Organization and Christie's Foundation, which provides support and cherished moments to critically ill children and their families. For the past five years, the restaurant has been actively supporting the Garden Grove Unified School District's Regional Occupation Program by offering internships to students in order to teach them the functions of the restaurant industry. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present Kevin Sheehan of Buca di Beppo Italian Restaurant with a certificate of recognition and gift as the April Business Spotlight honoree. Garden Grove salutes you as an outstanding philanthropic business in the community.
Thank you.
Before you came up, I just want to make one comment. Councilman Broadwater and I were there when that event occurred. And I asked you, and I asked a couple of other people, "Why did you pick the store in Garden Grove?" And you said, "Because we love Garden Grove." Well, we love you. We love Buca di Beppo. So please come forward and shake hands and have your picture taken, and then we'll figure out how to get the box and everything to you. We're going to give you this stuff first. We'll shake hands.
Thank you very much.
Then I'll give you this. I would like to say a few words, please, right at the podium.
Picture first.
Yeah, picture first.
Am I blocking you?
It's okay. We want you. It doesn't matter if we're in here.
One more.
Well, thank you very much. This is very kind. We're proud to be a part of the community and to be a part of the International West Corridor. And we look forward to doing many more years of business in the city of Garden Grove. And thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll open our communication.
Oh, we've got one more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Steve Lemire from Vista to present on Orange County's 2-1-1 program.
Good evening. Thank you, Kathy. I'm here representing, do we have the slide coming up?
Up there? Is that not on?
It's coming.
It's coming on. It takes a little bit.
There we go. First, I'd like to take kind of a straw poll. How many are familiar with 2-1-1 here in Orange County? Okay, it's a little bitter response than I'm used to getting at these meetings. I'm here to raise awareness because there is a lack of awareness of the valuable and vital asset that we represent to the community. Can I have the next slide, please? Let's pass that one, too. Everyone knows 911. You have an emergency. There's fire, emergency, police emergency, paramedics. We dial 911. The flip side of that is 2-1-1. This is where services that are non-emergency but urgent services for human beings are available. In Orange County, we have... Orange County is one of the biggest and richest counties in the United States. Yet, we still have over 5,000 organizations, agencies, and programs serving the population in Orange County. These are people that need safety net, shelter, food, all the different, the full gamut of human needs and services. Could we go to the next slide, please? When a caller calls 211, it's a toll-free number. It's anonymous, so the caller doesn't have to identify themselves. They reach a specialist who's trained to ask the proper questions and find out what the person's needs are and give the resources for those needs. And the slide that's up here now, and there's a copy of the slide in your documentation there, shows the different categories of needs. And as you can see, they are varied and many. A typical caller calling 211 will end up with referrals to two, three, sometimes four of these different categories of needs for a single caller. And with the way the economy's been, more people laid off, more people jobless, homeless, the newly poor, all these people that don't know how to work around and work within the system that's already been out there, the problem's just gotten worse. In 2007, we handled over 70,000 calls. In 2008, it was 87,000. Last year, we handled over 107,000 calls from this community. Not just Garden Grove, but Garden Grove as well. Next slide, please. And this is a representation of just four of the categories of need where the increase in need has incurred. Emergency shelters, people who've lost their way and need someplace to stay while they're getting their way back. Health care. Health care, actually, in this area of the county, requests for health care has gone up as much as 100%. And we all know why. Next slide, please. 2-1-1 also serves another valuable function and benefit to the community. We're one of the emergency response or disaster response partners with the county. So should there be an emergency, not only does the 911 Bureau kick in, your police and first responders, but 2-1-1 also. There's a testimonial here that says in a recent hurricane season in Florida, the 2-1-1 down there took 60,000 calls helping people that would have otherwise called 911 and jammed up those lines. I can only imagine how many people got through to 911 because 2-1-1 was there to take those calls. Did you have a question?
No, go ahead. You're doing fine.
And as an example, locally, during the freeway complex fires, if you were driving down the freeway, the signs on the freeway said, "Call 911 for an emergency, but for other information, call 211." San Diego County, 2-1-1 was inundated. They put on all their reserve and emergency volunteers, and they still couldn't handle the load. So Orange County and Riverside, San Bernardino County, I believe LA County also, were taking a lot of those calls at the same time. And again, the calls are for things like, "Where's the shelter? Where's the available hospital? Is the road's available? Are they closed or are they available to the hospital? Where's the food? Where's the water? Where are people gathering in different communities?" So this is what 2-1-1 does also in times of an emergency. So the summary is that we're a three-digit phone number, just like 911, toll-free like 911. We just don't service quite the same need. We cover quite a bit more need than just 911. It's confidential, 24 by 7. We operate with 150 languages. We offer collateral in many languages, English and Spanish on most of it, Vietnamese as well. And we're also a disaster response partner. Next slide, please. There's some additional benefits that 2-1-1 brings to the community, and some of it to cities and some of it to the partners that we deal with, all the agencies and programs that we help people find. And that includes, well, for one thing, some organizations try and print directories. And there is a directory available in Orange County. And if we had a directory of all the services, it would be at least 5,000 to 6,000 phone numbers and names. And where would a person go to find the directory if they needed it? How would they sort through it, navigate through the directory to find the two or three needs that they want in their area of the county? And what's better than that? Call 211, talk to a live agent who's trained and wants to help. And in four or five minutes, you've got the referrals to the resources that you need. Also saves those agencies the cost of developing, printing, distributing, reprinting, redistributing directories each year. And we all know that anything you put in print almost stops sleep by the time it's printed. At least some of the information is so. One of the things that we do is we maintain a database of those 5,000-plus agencies and programs, and some of them on a daily basis. Some of the shelters, for instance, some of the food banks. We have to touch base with them every day to find out which ones are available so we can get proper referrals to our population. We also save a lot of agencies misdirected calls. Think of people calling for that myriad of needs that I had up on that other slide and calling, say, the city desk and someone at the front desk trying to sort through all that. Well, by directing them to 211, we've saved the city and other agencies having to try and figure out where to refer people. So we're helping cities as well. It's kind of an after effect or a fringe benefit. But our primary goal is to provide the 211 number so that callers have a place to go when they have some needs. And that's my presentation. I'd like to open to questions.
Thank you. Any council, any questions? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we'll go to oral communications for the council and for the agency. Robin Mercario.
Good evening. I'm Robin Mercario. I just wanted to start off on a positive note and thank both the city council and the city staff for cleaning up the Brookhurst Triangle. There was a lot of construction debris and a lot of trash, and that's been cleaned up and is certainly an improvement. We all look forward to receiving the news as to whether the park grant will be actually given to the city, and we'll find out in autumn, in October, September, or October. So hopefully, we will get a public park, you know, from the state grant. So we'll wait and see. The other item I wanted to mention was the recent rate increase approved by the council for the paramedic services. On your property tax bill like this, that you get an annual rate down here. It gives you your assessments. And it gives here for paramedic services. The previous rate was 2.5% of your assessed value. That's not your market value, but that's the assessed value that the county, in fact, deems that your property is worth. You recently approved a rate increase from 2.5% to 6%. And if your home is assessed, just to sort of give you a grasp of what that number means, if your property is assessed at $393,000, you currently pay at the rate of 2.5%. You pay $100 for that paramedic service. With the new rate increase that was approved by council, that will go up to 6%, which will represent $240. That is 140% increase over the previous rate. Deana Nguyen was the only council member to not vote for that. And very likely, Deana, you will not receive the fire and police endorsement and support that you did last time. Andrew Doe was absent for the vote. And then, when he was here, he abstained. One would wonder why. It's also certainly very reminiscent of his boss, Supervisor Janet Nguyen. When she was on this council, conveniently dismissed herself from critical votes as well. I see that he is also absent again this evening. I guess something else came up. But it's certainly important, when you're on council, to be here. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Marina Limón.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Marina Limón y vivo en el 12721 Harbor Boulevard.
Good afternoon. My name is Marina Limón. I live at 12721 Harbor Boulevard.
La razón que estoy aquí es porque hemos pedido una reunión con los supervisores de la ciudad por meses y ellos se han negado.
The reason we're here is because we've been asking for a meeting with city supervisors about this property for months and have not, the meeting has been denied.
Queremos hablar de problemas como que nos cortan el agua sin previo aviso.
We'd like to talk about problems such as the fact that at this property, they shut off the water frequently without telling us ahead of time.
Otra cosa que quiero comentar, estamos contentos con la ciudad que está reconociendo sus obligaciones legales de actualizar el plan de reubicación.
On another topic, we're very happy that the city is recognizing its legal obligation to update the relocation plan for the property.
Sin embargo, todavía sigue inadecuado el plan.
However, the plan is still inadequate.
Si uno mira la renta por medio de ACO en esta área de Orange County, no hay ninguna manera en que la cantidad de reubicación que está refiriendo acá sea adecuada para seguir viviendo en esta área.
If you look at the average rents in this area of Orange County, there's no way that the amounts of relocation that are being referred to in the plan would be adequate for us to continue living in this area.
So les suplico que hagan otro intento de corregir el plan de reubicación. Muchas gracias.
So I ask that you try again and come up with a plan that is correct and that is adequate. Thank you. Thank you. Randy Mayor.
Good evening. I'd like to start off on a positive note as well. We at the Travel Country Trailer Park do appreciate what little or slowly-processed repairs and maintenance have been done in the park. They've been slow coming and, in some cases, only half addressed. And I think that we need to have at least one of the city council members come down and, you know, and see that we actually have a legitimate complaint. Now, Andrew Doe, who, again, we've noticed is missing, is the only city council member that has actually come down and walked the park with us. And I'm sure he's made notes, okay? And some of these problems have been addressed. But not all of them. And the ones that have been addressed have been slightly inadequate. They really could have been done better or more thoroughly. So you might be interested in... We held up this banner for Channel 52, okay? And this is what we're asking the city council to help us accomplish at the complex. And it doesn't take much other than just an honest interest in giving people an environment that they can actually live in, and safely. So now, as far as the relocation plan, again, we believe the updated version is not adequate. We believe that you guys can come back with something, you know, a little bit more giving than what's there, okay? And I'm not worried about as much as the rent levels today in Orange County as I am what they will be when the economy picks up. And when the economy picks up, the rent rates will go up. And right now, they're at the lowest point in Orange County's ever in history. So I would like you guys to see if you can't all get together and come up with, you know, something a little better than what was offered. We'd like to see the city and Oberlin Pacific get together with us and, like it's already been mentioned, truly sit down and have a meeting. We are getting very little, very little rapport with onsite management. We're told that it'll be taken care of. And of course, it usually ends up getting taken care of, but it's six months later. And I'm sure that when Garden Grove is actually repaving areas or filling in potholes, I know they have excess asphalt that can be used to take care of, offset the problem that we have as far as the, not only driving surfaces, but the main walking space in the area. So I'd like to see, I'd like to see if we can't, you know, make some kind of improvement on that. And as far as, we have a bathroom problem. We have two bathrooms for 50 families. That means six toilets and six showers for 50 families. You're looking at an average of relatively 150 people. And that's far, that's far too little, you know, to address the park's needs. They tore, they fixed one up and they tore the other one down. So what the purpose of that is, I don't know. But we do need to address that problem. We also have people driving in stakes into the ground and prepping the power boxes against the stakes and wrapping wire around so that the power boxes don't fall in the dirt. And, you know, I've seen that myself. So that needs to be addressed. We have another problem. We have, you guys are using the property next door, and I see I'm running out of town, for staging areas for your street reconditioning, whatever you're doing down Harbor, okay? You guys are blowing an awful lot of dirt, not only into the trailer park, but into the connecting neighborhoods, depending upon which way the wind is blowing. And you know we've...
Thank you very much. Okay, Martine Roca.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Martine Rocha. Vengo a hablar sobre las reglas del parque que no están claras.
My name is Martine Rocha, and I'm here to talk about the fact that the park rules have not been clarified.
Nosotros queremos que la gerencia se está aprovechando para echar desalojos a las personas por violar las reglas.
We believe that the management of the park is taking advantage of people, taking advantage of the opportunity to file evictions against people for violating the park rules.
Pero el problema es que no hay reglas claras.
But the problem is that the park rules are not clear.
Hace muchos años que no se aclaran cuáles son las reglas y ahora tenemos una nueva compañía de gerencia.
It's been many years since the park rules were clarified, and we now have a new management company.
Que nos den una lista de las reglas oficiales del parque.
We would like a list of the official park rules.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jose Sanchez.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Jose Sanchez y vivo en el 12721 de la Harbor Boulevard, que es una propiedad de la ciudad de Garden Grove.
My name is Jose Sanchez. I live at 12721 Harbor Boulevard, which is a property owned by the city of Garden Grove.
Soy miembro de ACE y quiero decirles algunos problemas que hemos tenido.
I'm a member of ACE, and I'd like to describe a few problems that we've been having.
Estamos contentos que por fin arreglaron el pavimento. Ya hace mucho tiempo que pedíamos un arreglo para que no se dañaran los carros y no tuvieran accidente los niños afuera de los parqueaderos.
We're happy that the city has finally started fixing the pavement. We've been asking for the pavement to be fixed for months so that we don't have damage to our cars and that kids don't fall in holes, potholes, in that park.
Pero también en el espacio donde yo vivo, el pavimento está muy desparejo y tengo una bebé de dos años y medio y cada ratito se anda trompezando en los bordos.
However, in my space, there is a serious pothole that has not been fixed. And I have a two-and-a-half-year-old daughter that is constantly tripping and falling over it.
Hemos tratado de resolver los problemas con los gerentes, pero no han respondido.
We've tried to resolve this problem with the onsite managers, but they have not responded.
Llevamos varios meses pidiendo una reunión con un supervisor de la ciudad, y dicen que no.
For several months, we've been asking for a meeting with the supervisor from the city, and they've told us no.
Nada más estamos acá para pedir una reunión para poder resolver estos problemas. Gracias.
We're just here asking for a meeting so that we can try and resolve some of these problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Rod Powell.
Hi, my name is Rod Powell. And it's good to see you guys here, most of you.
Hi, my name is Rod Powell, and it's good to see you guys here, most of you. Wasn't going to really talk about Andrew tonight, but he's not here, so now I might, you know. I was going to talk very briefly about fireworks. And just to remind you that it's only three months away, and it is important that people, if they're going to do them, at least be safe. And it'd be nice if the people that do them, who are not the majority, I think there's, I don't think there's anyone here that would disagree with me that if you go down any street, 80% or 90% of the homes are not interested in fireworks. It's just, just a small, small percentage of people that care about something like that. So why do we do something that is a ticking time bomb? You know, just like there's going to be an earthquake that's going to impact our lives one day, you know, we live with that, we accept that. And it's going to happen, and hopefully, I hate to say it, hopefully it'll be a long time away, you know? Of course, by saying that, then somebody a long time away is going to have to deal with that. Fireworks, sooner or later, something bad is going to happen. You know, you laugh it off, you know, you call it, you use whatever terms Councilman Jones used, some strange term to describe that grand jury report, but it's not a joke. You know, I mean, it's to the people, there's people that are panicking right now, knowing that three months from now, they have to go through that. There's people that are spending the last three months with their pet because three months from now, it's going to run away and not come back. So it's not, it's not, you know, really it's not very funny. Councilman Doe, I do not know why he's not here tonight. I don't know if any of you know why he's not here tonight. He's obviously, this is not important to him. Where I, the way I handle and conduct my affairs, absent, being an absent person is not the way to do things, you know? I like to, when I watch the TV and see the council meeting, when I've come down here, Mayor Dalton, you're here every time, you know, and all of you are, really almost every time, the four of you are always here. In just a short period of time, we've got a guy that just, this is not a priority. And why are we going through this? Why can't someone do something about it? You know, we all know the story. We all know that he registered to, you know, to vote in Garden Grove, even though he still lived in Santa Ana. And he registered at that house on Shannon Street in Garden Grove so he could run for the council. And then he somehow, because of the dynamics of the ethnic component, I believe is a factor in why he got elected, 15% of our Garden Grove citizenry voted for him. I'd be willing to bet his popularity right now is less than 15% because he's offended a lot of the people that voted for him. So, and this is what we get, we get an empty chair time and time again. I've spoken at this council of my minimal looking into the matter. I've been to the house where he lives in Santa Ana, and believe me, he still lives there. I've been there and seen his wife and daughter one day on a Sunday when I was there. They just pulled up, just happened, and I've been there, I used to go there for five minutes. The five minutes I happened to be there, his wife and daughter show up and they're outie. So, I mean, repeatedly, I've been there so few times, and yet, a high percentage of the time I've been there, they're there. And in Garden Grove, where I live right, you know, a couple blocks down, and I pass by there almost every day, going to Anaheim, and I pop down the street just to see what cars he's got backed in. He's got, he owns about five or six vehicles, all registered on the Shannon address. Isn't that interesting? They're all registered in a place he doesn't live because he wants people to, he wants to create the illusion that he lives there. Why are we putting up with this? You know, if this isn't grounds for being recalled, otherwise we're stuck with him for two and a half more years? Anyways, y'all have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Philbert Waters.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilman. My situation here is on a sanitation out in West Garden Grove. This was started on September the 8th, 2008. It had a completion date of August the 10th of 09. I live in the area there. Been a big inconvenience. We start to leave, we have to make a detour because they have the street blocked off. I would like to see what the cost overlay is on this thing and have somebody call me about it.
All right, we'll have someone call you.
And on top of that, there was a building next door to it where they were working. It had to be tore down because of their construction, which is costing the taxpayers over $500,000 just for that building. This thing has gone on and on and on. It's eight months over right now. No completion date, no nothing. We, the taxpayers, are paying this. So I think we deserve a right to know what's going on.
Okay, we'll have someone contact you tomorrow. You're welcome. Okay, I'm closing oral communications at this time. We have no written communications.
No.
So we'll go to consent items.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, although you have items 6A through 6J, I'll need to have you pull 6F, which is the relocation plan, and then 6E is a cooperation agreement between the agency and the city for property on Fairview, and I think Councilman Jones will-
Also C and D, right?
No, those are street widening. I don't think it affects the property. Those are other parcels.
Okay.
So if you want to move on to balance.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion on the balance.
Move the balance.
Second. Have a motion second, call for the vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Item 6F, you received at the last minute, a correspondence from the attorneys involving in the RV park requesting some clarification on the relocation plan. Staff will provide a response to that in a timely manner, but that doesn't preclude you from taking action on the relocation plan, and we'll respond to them again in a timely manner.
Okay.
So if you want to entertain a motion for that.
I'll move the issue.
Second.
Have a motion second, call for the vote.
And then I'm going to leave for 6E.
Okay. Okay, the city council's still, I'm sorry, city council's still in session, and we'll go to the agency.
No, now you only take a vote on 6E without Councilman Jones.
Okay. To have a motion.
Moved.
Second.
Motion second, call for the vote.
None of the bodies here.
Motion received, three yes votes.
Okay, now we go to the-
Now we can go to the agency.
Okay. Mr. Broadwater.
Okay, we've done public input. We had a closed session with nothing to report on at this time. Consent items. Mr. Fratell.
Again, Mr. Chairman, item 4A, sorry, Mr. Jones, is the companion item on the cooperating agreement, and Mr. Jones would excuse himself on this one. 4B is the relocation plan. Again, same comments about the letter and the staff responding to that letter, so.
Let's take them individually. Mr. Jones, would you like to leave?
Or, yeah, either way.
One more. We'll call you back when we want you this time.
Okay, move approval.
We got a motion on 4A for approval.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, three yes votes.
Now calling back.
So we're done with the consent calendar?
Let's go with 4B. No, we haven't done 4B yet. Relocation plan for eligible displaced tenants at-
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? None, call for the vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Okay, let's do public hearings. I think that these, okay, we have a public hearing, 5A.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. 5A is a joint public hearing with the city council and the redevelopment agency to consider an amended and restated disposition and development agreement with the Garden Grove MXD LLC. It's in conjunction with the Water Park Hotel on Harbor Boulevard. And Greg Blodgett is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Matt. The purpose of this report is to request the city council and agency hold a joint public hearing to consider the approval of the amended and restated DDA between the agency and McQuinney for the development of a 600-room Water Park Hotel, 1,200-space parking structure, and up to 18,000 square foot of restaurant space. Since the approval of the DDA back in May 2009, several of the salient points have changed for the DDA. Due to extreme conditions to obtain financing, makes the agency pass assistance not viable to move this project forward. So today, banks are requiring agency assistance in a lump sum versus assistance payments. The major salient points or changes to the DDA include the following: agency contribution of $42 million, which will be due at the opening of the hotel, and this will be issued with tax increment bonds that the agency will issue upon the opening of the hotel. Also included in the revision to this agreement are the two Lita Lane properties to square off the site, and this is shown on this map under the red and yellow properties. We have 12601 and 12602 Lita Lane, and these are included in the development site. At this time, staff recommends the agency and city council take the following actions: conduct a public hearing, and the agency and city council approve of the amended DDA and resolutions, and authorize the agency and director to execute necessary documents for this project. We do have the developer here for the project to answer questions, and that concludes my staff report.
Any questions for staff?
Yes. What's being amended on the DDA exactly?
The major provisions are for the financial assistance and agency contribution to the deal. The original contribution was a sharing of revenues of 50% of the net generated revenue over a 14-year period. And under this DDA amendment, the agency contribution of $42 million will be given to the developer once the hotel opens. And then the other major addition is the two Lita Lane properties, which will be included in the development site.
So is it the same amount, but not spread out? Now it's upfront?
Essentially, it is. It actually works out better for the agency in that the, by spreading the money out over time, it would have required more agency money contributed to the project because of the time value of money. By making a lump sum payment upfront, you don't pay that so-called interest charges over 14 years. So the agency and the city actually receive a greater amount of the tax revenue of the previous deal.
The agency has to take out a bond?
Correct.
And how would that be repaid?
It'll be repaid through the revenues from the hotel. So in essence, just using ballpark numbers, it's estimated that the tax revenue from the hotel will be roughly $8.5 million a year. The proposed debt service on the $42 million will be roughly $4 million a year. So there should be almost twice the amount of revenue coming from the hotel to pay for the bonds.
The tax revenue?
Correct. Just from the hotel.
Right, so $4 million will go to the bond, and for the remaining $4 million, will that go to the city?
It'll go to the city.
It won't, it's not going to be split with the developer?
No, there's no longer a split. All the revenues will flow to the city, and of those revenues, of the $8.5 million, four will go towards debt service, the remaining $4.5 million will stay with the city, and there'll be no splitting of those.
Yeah, originally, we were going to split the revenue, and how much was it originally that we were going to split?
It would have, under the original deal, you would have taken the $8.5 million and split that 50/50 over the 14-year period.
And the bond would take how long to repay?
This is, I think, a 20-year bond.
20-year bond. The other one is 14 years.
It would have been 14 years. But the net effect is that the city will actually retain a greater amount of the tax revenue under this proposal than under the previous proposal.
Okay, because you didn't have those figures today.
No, we have a chart that shows the difference between the two, and we've shared those in, with the council before.
Full session? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Hearing none at this time. We'll open up the public hearing. Is the city opened up?
Yes, we are.
Okay. We opened up the public hearing. Anybody like to speak on this issue? Now is your chance.
Good evening, President of the Agency and members and mayor and council members. My name is Charles Mitchell, and I'm a bit concerned when I look at a figure of $42 million that the redevelopment agency is going to put forth for this hotel project. Now, I understand that the time is essential in getting some of these projects started, but I wonder with the current situation with the state budget, whether the money that we generate in this bond for the redevelopment agency is going to be secure from the state taking money from redevelopment agencies to balance their budget? Now, if that happens, that means the city is going to be responsible for this bond issue, and we're looking at several years before this hotel opens, and at that time, we can expect to start getting some revenue. But are we putting the city budget and the city's financial situation in jeopardy by going ahead with this right now and approving $42 million in a bond issue?
Let me clarify that while we got it right in our mind. The bond issue doesn't get issued until that hotel opens. So it's not going to happen until the hotel opens.
That means the $42 million-
Starts getting paid back immediately.
But it is advanced at that time?
Yes.
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anybody, Peggy, please.
I probably should bring up parking because this is less than a mile from my house, but I have no concerns at that. But my question is, when we say the $4-plus million we are theoretically going to be making in tax money, is that going to the city-city or the redevelopment-city? That's question one.
Bed tax is where the money usually comes from, and bed tax goes immediately into the city fund.
It's not a redevelopment cycle?
That is correct. Only property tax goes back to the city.
That's thankful, but I am kind of curious how the city can even talk about $42 million for a project that's not even started when I went to the school board meeting last week and complained because, basically speaking, all adult education may be ending as we know it in June. So where are we getting $42 million from somebody that we can't even afford to help older citizens get some education?
Well, that's a-
Are our priorities kind of swayed to developers as opposed to citizens? Thank you.
Okay. I won't even go there. Speak.
Just for clarification from what Peggy, the previous speaker, spoke, instead of-
Why don't you tell us who you are first, just for the sake of the record?
I am Robin Marcario, lifelong resident here in Garden Grove. The $4 million that we would have paid per year in sharing the revenue literally goes to paying for the bond, correct? bond, correct? There's another way of looking at it.
Staff, help me there.
That's another way of sort of, you know, what you would have...
Close enough.
Close enough, yeah, okay.
I mean, just to sort of get a grasp around it. So if I understand it correctly, and I'm sure staff will clarify, because that's our favorite thing to do, if the interest rates hold and stay low, like they are now, then issuing the bond three years from now is advisable, because it's at a lower rate. So we will, in fact, benefit, you know, under the premise that the interest rate stays low. Now, is it a bond or is it a COP?
It's a bond.
It's a bond. Will that have to be approved by the voters?
No.
Since it's a bond? No?
No.
Okay, just, yeah, clarification, good. All out there.
Trying to answer the question.
Yep, all good, just...
Make somebody a good wife.
I'm just hoping that the interest rates stay good, and it all sounds good. Thanks
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my name is Chad McQuinney, CEO and co-founder of McQuinney. Pleasure to be here tonight, and I thought I'd want to answer a few questions, but also talk a little bit about how this came about, and then we'll go from there. The first is, I think it's important to understand that at the time that this DDA was originally put into place, the financial markets were just starting to get into the turmoil that they're currently in now. And we've had a very long relationship with the City of Garden Grove and City staff, and have done a lot of great things in the past. But one thing is certain, and that is, over time, things have obviously changed with the financial markets. What we're finding in the marketplace now is that lenders, historically, would have been willing to take revenues over a certain period of time, but they're wanting to really focus on being a lot more conservative up front. And so we worked with the City staff to come up with a plan that would satisfy what we believe the lenders will require, and then also will result in a lot of additional revenue to the City over the next 15 to 20 years. It's important to also understand that this is a very big project, upwards of $300 million to develop, and quite frankly, it'll probably be one of the largest new construction projects in the state of California, once we get it underway. I would like to thank the Agency, the staff, and the City Council for their flexibility in working with us. Obviously, I don't think anyone anticipated that the financial markets would be in the turmoil that they're in now. We are seeing some thawing out, though. I attended a meeting recently with a group of lenders, and they said, at the end of the day, we have to loan money, or we go out of business also. So we're going to be more conservative. We're going to be stricter on our underwriting. But we have money to lend, we have to lend, et cetera. And I think that's a good sign for all of us. Obviously, the other thing that we believe this does is, by being able to offer to our lenders the assistance up front, even though a much smaller amount, instead of over time, it will hopefully increase the likelihood that this project moves forward sooner rather than later. And when it does, obviously, everyone benefits. We'd like to take advantage of the reduced construction cost. Obviously, the City budget would like the revenue sooner, and we would like to get the project open as soon as we can. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
You know, the question I get asked most in the City of Garden Grove is, how do young people in the City of Garden Grove get into the water park without rent a room?
That's a great question, Bruce, and I don't have an answer to that yet. But as you know, this project, one of the reasons it works is because of the rate for the hotel room.
Any questions for, no. Okay.
Great, thank you.
Any other question? Anybody else want to speak? Gone once, twice, gone. Okay, at this time, we will close the public hearing. Any comments?
Over approval.
If I may, you have four separate actions you could have to take, two as the Agency, two as the council. What I'd like you to do is first approve the resolution by the City Council approving the DDA.
Okay, before we jump ahead, he said move approve. Before we jump ahead, I ask you if we had any comments. I'd like to make a comment that I think this is a fabulous hotel deal for the City of Garden Grove. I believe that if it doesn't put $4 million, we planned on it putting $3.5 million in the coffers of the City. The City of Garden Grove is a lot better off, because we built those hotels on Harbor Boulevard than we would have been if we didn't. I think last year was $12, $12.5, $13 million went right into the City Fund. That came from hotel revenues. And a lot of people, I don't think, appreciate what really happened there. And we haven't stopped on that. I mean, there's still a market there, and Garden Grove would be silly not to participate in that market, because that is going to be a lot of money for our community that our taxpayers, the taxpayers in this community don't have to pay. It comes from people that come here and visit. And it's a fantastic deal for us. Garden Grove does not have a Westminster Mall. We don't have a Disneyland, but we do, are close to Disneyland. It's the one thing that we, as a city, can take advantage of. And I think we're doing it tonight. We're doing it again. $42 million sounds like a horrendous amount of money. No doubt in my mind that that's huge. But we aren't paying it back. The hotel is. So the truth of matter is, this is, this should fall through smooth and easy, and the next time the state gets into trouble, which they will probably get in trouble again, at least we'll be set for it again like we were this time. We have not had the problems the City of Los Angeles has had. We've sort of, granted, we've had to tighten our belt, but nothing compared to some other cities. And it's because we've had additional revenues. And so I'm certainly going to support this, and we're going to take the most...
Yeah, I just want to make one comment, too. You know, one of the questions that I get from people is, well, why are you doing it now? Times are terrible, and why don't you wait till times get better? Well, a project like this takes four years before it opens. And if you wait until things are better, just tack four years onto the end of that. Now is the time to start getting all your ducks in a row and working towards it, because that minimizes the time. It's less than four years. And as soon as that hotel opens, believe me, we're going to start making money. But the point is, you don't wait until everything is fine, because you've missed the boat in that expanse of time. You start now, and you do everything you can to speed up the process, so the date is open, and we start making money.
Any other staff statements? Okay, at this time, let's entertain some motions.
Okay, the first one would be, pardon me?
The amendment, the ADD, DDA.
And that would be the City Council resolution, which approves the DDA and the environmental findings.
Okay, we have a motion for the DDA.
Second.
We have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Call for the vote.
Motion received. Four yes votes.
And then the second action will be the Redevelopment Agency approving the resolution, approving the DDA and the environmental findings.
Move to approve.
Second motion, second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Four yes votes.
We're now on to 5B, which is also a joint public hearing, and Councilmember Jones will excuse himself on this item.
Okay, I thought we had four votes on that. Am I...
Yeah, I was mistaken. They're combined, both the...
That's the first time I've ever known you to be mistaken, Matthew. That's once.
Yeah, don't let it happen again.
Okay, let's go with 5B.
5B is also a joint public hearing with the City Council and the Redevelopment Agency to consider a disposition and development agreement with Century Village Group for a housing project on the Century Triangle, and Jim Delalong is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fertal. The purpose of this report tonight is for the City and Agency to consider a disposition and development agreement with Century Village Group LLC for the development of 53 townhomes on 2.67 acres of real property in the City of Garden Grove within the site known as the Century Triangle. Century Village Group LLC is an entity of Brandywine Homes. The Century Triangle has been the subject of several past development proposals. In October 2008, the Agency entered into a negotiating agreement with Brandywine Homes for the development of the Century Triangle site. After dealing with a shifting housing market, constantly changing economy, and unwilling sellers, the developer, working with the Agency and City staff, produced a project proposal to fit on the 2.67 acres of Agency-owned land at the northwest corner of Taft Street and Century Boulevard. Pursuant to the agreement, the developer will pay the Agency $4,010,000 for the 2.67-acre site and construct 53 for-sale, three-story townhome units. The developer will also be responsible for all associated off-site improvements, such as curb, gutter, and sidewalk around the perimeter of the project. The City and Agency will also work with the developer to construct additional off-site improvements to improve the west side of Taft Street north of the project to Garden Grove Boulevard, as well as improving the alley bordering the project to the north from the project boundary to Century Boulevard. In addition, the Agency will be obligated to pay an amount not to exceed $50,000 for the removal and remediation of identified hazardous materials. State law requires that notice of the time and place of a public hearing for agency disposition of property must be published in a newspaper of general circulation at least once a week for at least two successive weeks, 15 days prior to the public hearing. Notice for this public hearing was published in the Orange County News newspaper on March 24th, March 31st, and April 7th, 2010. Additionally, pursuant to state law, a summary report has been prepared, which provides, as the name suggests, a summary of the agreement, as well as an explanation of why the sale of this property will assist in the elimination of blight. As mentioned earlier, the project will result in agency land sale proceeds in the amount of $4,010,000 and $150,000 to $200,000 in annual Agency property tax revenue. With this being a joint public hearing, staff has separate recommendations for the City Council and the Agency. First, staff recommends the City Council conduct the public hearing, the joint public hearing, and adopt a resolution consenting to the approval by the Agency of the disposition and development agreement by and between the Agency and Century Village Group LLC. Second, staff recommends the Agency adopt a resolution approving the disposition and development agreement with Century Village Group LLC for the development of the 2.67-acre site in the City of Garden Grove within the area known as the Century Triangle, and authorize the Director to execute the disposition and development agreement, and any other pertinent documents to effectuate the agreement. That concludes my presentation. Agency, staff, and the developer, represented by Jim Barisic, are available to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Can we go back to the whole Century Triangle picture? Okay. What's going to happen to the left part that's not getting developed? Is that part of this group, or is...
That is separate, and there are two properties there that are adjacent to the 2.67-acre site that we do not own.
Oh, okay.
We've made contact with those property owners, but at this time, they are unwilling to sell.
Okay, that's all I needed to know.
Okay, any other questions? At this time, we'll open up the public hearing for 5B, the joint hearing. The Garden Grove City Council considers a disposition and development agreement with the Century Village Group. Anybody here like to speak on that issue?
My name is Charles Mitchell, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering what is going to be the cost of relocating the businesses that are currently located at that corner of Century and Euclid?
Nothing.
Century and Euclid.
They're not going to be...
That's Century and Euclid. You mean Century and Taft, don't you?
It's vacant.
Okay, understood. I thought there were a couple of businesses, auto repair and something like that.
They're gone.
Ah, okay, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Robin Marcario. This is my last time speaking.
Is that a promise, or...
I've been good. I haven't come very often. I used to come more often. Keep talking, I'll come more often. I just wanted to make a couple of factual comments, and then I'll close, do a closing. There was an exclusive negotiating agreement for six months granted to this developer in October of 2008. It was for apartments. There was a competitive bid process. It was for apartments. And that expired two years ago. The taxpayers have been paying for the property for the two years that we've been holding that for him, and the agreement had expired. We should have put it up for competitive bid. Don't know, I looked through the report. I don't know how much we paid for the property. I can see that you've mentioned that $4 million is, you know, what the developer's going to pay for it. Let's see. We don't know whether this is the best price, because this publicly-owned property has not been competitively bid. There was a comparable project done by Hanover Pacific back in 2008, which was townhomes. And then they were sort of set aside for the preference at that time for apartments. That was the basis for the agreement, was for apartments. It expired, and then we arbitrarily changed it back to homes, but we never put it up for competitive bid. So you don't know whether this is the best project. You don't know whether you're getting the best price, because it hasn't been put up for competitive bid. And just a quick note, as far as notification, you did meet your legal obligation, but normally, the City does publish that information in the local paper, which is widely distributed and read here in Garden Grove, and that is the Garden Grove Journal. It's widely available. It's free. It's distributed on Thursdays in numerous businesses in public areas. And yet, you published it with the Orange County News, with a fraction the number of people that actually read it. So I mean, there was a little tiny blurb in the register yesterday, but I think that you do a much better service by publishing with our local paper, which is the Garden Grove Journal. The Garden Grove Journal also is published online. So that's not something offered by the OC News. That's not online, and there's so few people that actually read that paper. You do a better service of notifying more people by continuing to stay with your normal practice, which is to put it with the Garden Grove Journal. I looked through for the Planning Commission. This hasn't been ever presented to Planning Commission. This proposal, this Century Triangle, has not been done, has not been given to the Planning Commission to give their input into the process. That's a public hearing that also would have been able to collect a bit more information from the public and our valued planning commissioners. We just completely, you guys circumvented that process entirely. So we don't know what the planning commissioners think of this project, one way or another. So basically, I am opposed to this for three reasons: the lack of competitive bid process, the poor notification to the public, and because you bypassed the Planning Commission in public hearing to hear more opinions. So thanks very much.
I want to ask staff a question. Have we violated any laws in this process?
No.
I'd like to hear that from our lawyer.
No, the, it was, noticed in a newspaper of general circulation that had been adjudicated as such. The Planning Commission will hear this matter in due course when it's part of the entitlement process. What was the third?
Competitive bid.
Oh, competitive bidding is not required. That's why we're having a public hearing. And we had, actually, a competitive bid process back with the, in terms of the selection of the developer, and we have a current appraisal on value, which is what we base the value on.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak on this issue? Oh, we have the developer here himself. Let's machine gun him.
Mayor, Chairman, members of the council, and the Agency, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening.
Say your name, Stephen.
Oh, yeah, Jim Barisic, excuse me, Brandywine Homes. It's, it is interesting. We are just, we're looking forward to commence our formal filings for all the entitlements, which will bring this entire project before the Planning Commission. We'll be doing that this month. We wanted to make sure that everything was in sync with the City with the development and disposition agreement before we went ahead and formally made that filings. And we're fine-tuning everything, because we want to make sure that everything is just done right. This is a significant new project in the core of downtown Garden Grove, and so we don't take it lightly. We want to make sure that it is going to be presented correctly and done in the proper fashion. We've been working with the City now on this development, proposed development and disposition agreement for, gosh, about a year and a half. We've gone through a number of different development schemes. First, I might say, we actually are paying more than the appraised value. We think that the project will be such a great contribution and be received so well by the public, we're willing to take that risk. And that's why we have our lender lined up. We're prepared to move forward with this reasonably expeditiously. up, we're prepared to move forward with this reasonably expeditiously. The exclusive negotiating agreement was actually extended specifically because we, and by the way, we spent probably close to $150,000 in multiple development schemes and scenarios for this project. It's one of the services that we do offer. We're willing to take that risk to come up with something that works best for the city, works in the marketplace, and will be long lasting in terms of benefit to all concerned. We're really pleased, once again, to have this opportunity to move forward with the entitlements, and would be glad to answer any questions the council and agency may have.
Any questions for Mr. Barisick? Hearing done, and certainly thank you for being here.
Thanks very much.
5B, let's go.
You have two actions, one by the council to approve the resolution approving the DDA and environmental findings. That'd be the first action.
Entertain a motion, move it.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, three yes votes.
And the same resolution approved by the agency?
Move it.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, three yes votes.
Okay, do you want to do 6A, or do you want to take the break now?
Well, let's go ahead and take five minutes.
Okay, we're going to take five minutes, we'll be back in five minutes.
No.
Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move the issue.
Second.
A motion second. Call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
Last time now.
Okay. Seven B.
Mr. Mayor, seven B is a public hearing to consider a plan unit development and a development agreement for a development of 2.5 acre site for single-family residential development on Fairview. And Lee Moreno is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. The item before you tonight is a request to transmit a planning commission recommendation for city council approval of a plan unit development and a development agreement for the construction of a 20-unit, single-family residential small lot subdivision located on the west side of Fairview Street, south of Trask Avenue, at 13531, 5181, and 85 Fairview Street. In March of this year, the planning commission approved a site plan SP 450 507, tentative tract map 173 53, and recommended city council approval for plan unit development, PUD 124 10, changing the zoning of the subject property from R1, single-family residential, to plan unit development, along with the development agreement, Development Agreement DA 180 10. The project proposes the construction of 22-story, single-family residential homes that range in size from approximately 1,600 square feet to 2,100 square feet. The site's main point of access will be from Fairview Street, with a secondary access point located toward the rear of the project from an existing alleyway. The homes will be served by a 28-foot wide road with parking on one side. The project provides a total of 76 parking spaces, which exceeds the code's minimum parking requirements by one space. And the project also includes two common open space areas that total 8,500 square feet, which exceeds the code's common open space requirement of 4,000 square feet. The PUD zoning designation establishes development standards and uses that are specific to a particular project. The rezoning of the property is necessary for the proposed subdivision to move forward, since the R1 zone doesn't permit the construction of small lot subdivisions. Small lot subdivisions are only permitted within the R2 and the R3 multifamily zones. And the regulations of the PUD set the zoning standards for the specific development, which includes parking, building setbacks, height, density, and landscaping. The project does propose a density of eight units per acre. And according to the general plan's land use designation for the property, the density ranges for the site is between 1 and 9 units per acre. Additionally, the project has been designed to comply with the development standards of the city's small lot subdivision ordinance as they pertain to building setbacks, building heights, private open space, common open space, parking, and access. Finally, Government Code Section 65864 provides authority to the city to enter into a development agreement. The development agreement will ensure that the applicant can build the project as approved within a period of four years. And in return, the city will receive a development agreement payment not to exceed $38,320. With that, staff would recommend that the city council introduce the first readings of two ordinances. The first is entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Adopting a Negative Declaration and Approving Plan Unit Development Number PUD 124 10", changing the zoning designation from R1, single-family residential, to Plan Unit Development Number PUD 124 10. And the second ordinance is titled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Adopting a Negative Declaration and Adopting Development Agreement Number DA 180 10" between Brandywine Homes Developer and the City of Garden Grove. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter?
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor. My question relates to access to this area. Now, I know that it meets the requirements of parking for the residents. But in the event that they have visitors, it's going to be very limited parking for visitors. And I expect they will probably park on the adjacent streets. And I just wonder if there is access by foot to this area, other than coming in on Fairview or off of that alley. Is there any other way of getting in there? So if they park on a street on the north side, are they going to have to walk all the way around the development to get in there to visit someone?
Thank you.
The only access to the site is from Fairview.
Right.
And there's no access to any of the side streets.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else like to speak on this matter? Mr. Brusick? Oh, wait a second. He's... I just recognized him first.
Mayor and council, Jim Brusick, Brandywine Homes. Thank you once again for the opportunity to be here. This... Actually, this proposed development is an excellent example of what can happen if government and private industry work close together. Because our original submittal plans... We actually have to congratulate the staff. They made a number of suggestions on how to improve it. We were able to improve it by incorporating all the parcels that currently front onto Fairview. And so you'll end up with all those vacant, somewhat rundown parcels being torn down here very quickly if this goes ahead, and being replaced with some beautiful new homes. Moderate-priced homes, I might add. But still, pretty upscale compared with what has been there currently and in the past. The party... Actually, this is, I believe, the first development that you will have been... You will consider under the new small-out ordinance, which the city spent, I think, a long, long time putting together. Those conditions of approval were fairly stringent, and it wasn't easy to comply. But I didn't think originally that we'd be able to do this without requesting variance. But we have no variances whatsoever. We've met or exceeded every single of the conditions in that zoning.
Thank you. Why don't you stand by just for a minute, just in case Peggy has some questions that I might call on you to ask or respond to. Peggy?
Well, this project is very near and dear to my heart because every time I go anywhere, I travel by this area. Number one, my issue is, we just got federal funding for $700,000 to widen Fairview right at this location because of traffic issues. So now we're taking out four houses and putting in 20. I don't care what the appearance is or whatever they look like. There is only one access point in and out of that. It's on Fairview. And according to the planning commission, where I went, and they... They're not going to put a signal up. So now every house in there, which are 20, I think it's 20 or 22, they are going to make a left-hand turn somewhere between 7:00 and 8:15 in the morning onto Fairview, which is already overly congested, to go to the three schools that are right off Trask: Doig Junior High, Santiago High School, and Eisenhower Elementary. So they are going to be making left-hand turns. And if you make the people go out, go right, they're going to go half a block and make an illegal U-turn in the middle of the street. It'll either be a policeman's delight or a nightmare for accidents. That's my number-one issue. Number second... The second issue is, part of the green space in there is that middle space in the middle of the street. Now, that is a real handy-dandy park to send your kids out to play on. Because I don't... The yards are going to be more than adequate for some of the projects I've seen throughout the state. They are going to be from 15 to 18 feet behind the house and the block wall behind your house. So you will have a tiny bit of space, not enough for children to play in. So that's another issue. And they say somewhere in this project paperwork that there will be 3.69 or 3.96 people living in a house. But now we are having houses that are larger than my house, where I raised four children very successfully. So they're telling us that they're not going to fill up these three, four, and five-bedroom houses with either children or other adults. So that's a little bit fictitious. I just find... And the only access... They have that alleyway, but that is not for public transportation. I believe that's only for emergency-type vehicles. It's not... People cannot come and go there and, I believe, end up on that Avalon Street. There is one way in and one way out for these 20 people on a street that's already showing congestion. And when you get down to the point about water, flooding, and that type of an issue, Fairview, where it runs into Garden Grove Boulevard, is already a huge flood any time it rains more than 15 minutes. Now, you're adding, according to this project, anywhere from... What is it? 180 to 200 trips a day of people coming and going. And the majority of those people will be heading towards the freeway. So there's a lot of things here. I do agree that this would be an attractive arrangement. But I, once again, I think it could be a little bit too many houses. And I think that issue on Fairview with people coming out and going left during the morning rush hour, where the reason we're having that street widened with federal funding is because of traffic flow to and from the freeway in the morning. So if we're already having issues and you add more people coming out, nobody lets their children walk to school anymore, no matter what grade level. So they will have to make a left-hand turn out of there. And to add another traffic signal about 150 feet after the one at Trask, which is already quite a long, long signal anyways. This is right near me. Actually, this and the hotel are both... I kind of live in between both of those projects tonight. But I do think there's a lot of things here that... They'll be an improvement for the city. But at the same time, it will be very hard on some of the residents that live around there. And there are not really any two-story projects. There's an individual here and there, two-story house around the area. The majority of the houses in that whole area are one-story, not two-story. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing. I just want to make a comment. I agree with... And even you said, Peggy, that it is going to certainly improve the area. What's there now is really an eyesore. And this is something that'll, you know, hopefully start a trend. And maybe there'll be some more lots along that path that someday will be improved, too. But, you know, one of the things, too, that we've gone through so many years on the council, where someone says, okay, you have a big lot. You can only put X number of houses on there. Or, no, leave it the way it is. Or, if you put small houses and you put too many of them, nobody's going to buy it. Well, there are different tastes, and people have different needs. You know, I have my own preference, too. But I don't let that interfere with what I'm voting on in the council because I look at it and I say, what does it do for the community? And I think you have to look at that overall. And, you know, as Mr. Brusick said, they're going to be moderately reasonably priced houses. And we need more of that. So I think, looking at the whole picture, I think it not only enhances the area, but it provides reasonable-priced housing, you know, for people. And let's face it, if small houses or condos weren't acceptable, people wouldn't buy them and builders wouldn't build them. So, you know, that is something, too, that you have to keep in mind. There are different tastes. There are people that want different-sized houses. Some are happy with small houses. Some want the biggest house on a block. You know, and that's tastes. But I think overall, I think that what it will provide for the community is good and for the city, and I'm going to support it. Did you want to make any other statement?
If you wanted to make a question, yeah.
Okay, no. Thank you very much. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Well...
Or do you want to make a comment?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I support the project. And it's a nice project. But I'm going to have to agree with Peggy on the traffic issue because I used to work in that area. It's really, really bad there. Could staff kind of look into the traffic aspect of it? I'm going to approve this project, but if staff could look into the traffic flow of the area.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Move the issue.
Second.
We have a second.
I'm sorry. You'll have to make a motion for the first ordinance and then a separate motion for the second.
Move the first issue.
Second. Broadwater messing with my thing again over here?
Motion received, three yes votes.
Okay.
Now the second ordinance.
Move the second issue.
Second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, three yes votes.
Mr. Mayor, seven C also involves the Century Triangle project. So Councilmember Jones will have to stay one more item.
Okay.
So seven C is a public hearing to consider street vacation of Walnut Street, located between Century and Taft. And Susan Emery is here to give a staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Staff is presenting a request to vacate that portion of Walnut Street, located between Century Boulevard and Taft Street, in order to remove the underutilized public right-of-way and facilitate the future development of the area. The general plan land use designations for the properties located adjacent to this portion of Walnut Street are residential, commercial, mixed-use one, which is intended to provide higher-density residential and commercial uses, and civic institution, which is intended to provide educational, hospital, and government uses. The city's redevelopment plan seeks to develop this area with residential condominiums, a use that is consistent with the general plan and the zoning designation. The proposed street vacation is intended to facilitate the future development of the area by incorporating the street into the total developable land area of the redevelopment project site known as the Century Triangle. The street vacation has been processed in accordance with the procedures set forth in the Streets and Highway Code. Pursuant to these requirements, on January 21st, the planning commission determined that the proposed street vacation conformed with the city's adopted general plan. On March 9th, the city council adopted a resolution of intention to set tonight as a public hearing date for the street vacation. The resolution of intention was posted on March 30th on the perimeter of the street in order to provide the public with an opportunity to comment on the proposed street vacation. Furthermore, no easements will be reserved for any of the existing public utilities. Staff's recommendation to the city council is to adopt the resolution approving street vacation number SV-118-10. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? I'll close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
Move the issue.
Second.
A motion, a second, and call for the vote.
Motion received, three yes votes.
Okay, seven D.
Mayor, seven D is a public hearing to consider amending Title IX of the Garden Grove Municipal Code Regarding Underground Utilities. And Susan Emery is here to give a staff report on this item.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, staff is presenting this evening a proposal to amend Title IX to modify the process for the undergrounding of utilities. Amending Title IX will allow developers the option to underground utilities off-site, which is the current requirement, or to pay an in-lube fee to the city and not require the undergrounding. Amending the code in such... In this way will benefit both small developers and the city itself. The requirement to underground on small projects can be cost-prohibitive and detrimental to some development. The current requirements are that developers must underground proposed and existing utilities, both onsite and offsite. The proposed amendment will allow developers the option of voluntarily paying an in-lube fee rather than to proceed with undergrounding offsite utilities. The requirement for the onsite undergrounding will remain the same. In-lube fees will be collected and deposited into a special account used for future undergrounding of utilities. This amendment will promote the reasonable and orderly undergrounding of utilities on public and private property throughout the city, while providing a viable alternative to developers. Also, the city will be able to implement undergrounding projects that are more cost-effective and efficient as part of larger projects in the community. The planning commission recommended approval of the proposed code amendment at their meeting on March 4th. And I'm going to read the title of the ordinance right now. The title of the ordinance is "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Approving Code Amendment Number A-154-10 to Add Chapter 9.48 to Title IX of the Garden Grove Municipal Code Pertaining to Undergrounding of Utilities and Amending Title IX, Chapter 9.40, Section 160, Pertaining to Required Subdivision Improvements." That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? How large a project does it have to be before they actually have to do it themselves instead of bailing out on it?
Excuse me, five acres above... Five acres or above, they have to underground, no matter what.
So on the one we just did on... We're just talking about doing on Century. How many acres is that?
2.6.
So that could get bailed out on?
Right. He wouldn't have to underground those. He could contribute an in-lube payment.
Well, I got mixed emotions on this one. I mean, I realize that fellow over on Chapman Avenue had a horrendous price for doing that one project. And certainly, this would have helped him. And I don't know, maybe he already fixed it, so it will help him. But, well, I like to see... I like to see... I know that the electric company charges outrageous prices to do this. I mean, they make... They've got to be making a ton of money on it.
I think, as it relates to Taft, it is our intention to make sure that those poles on Taft are underground as part of that project. The developer will contribute a portion, what would be a reasonable contribution towards that. And then, through the fund, we'll use the other proceeds to underground those poles. But as part of that project, when it goes to the planning commission, we will make sure that those poles on Taft around that project are underground.
Okay. I'll move the issue.
Second.
Okay, wait a minute. Did I have a... Okay. That's the only question for staff? I look to open the public hearing?
Oh, you didn't have a public hearing?
Anyone like to speak on this matter? Okay, I'll close the public hearing now. Mr. Broadwater?
Move the issue.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, and call for the vote.
Motion received, three yes votes.
I think we're... We'll go to...
Seven G.
Mr. Mayor, seven G is a public hearing to consider a resolution amending our neighborhood stabilization program, which deals with using stimulus money to help purchase foreclosed homes, as well as entering into an affordable housing agreement with Problem Property Resolution Team, LLC. And Allison Mills is here to give a staff report on this item.
Good evening, council. Tonight, the item you have before you is a public hearing for the amendment to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program in consideration of an affordable housing agreement with Problem Property Resolution Team. NSP funds were awarded through the California Department of Housing and Community Development for the purpose of addressing the high number of foreclosures. In June of 2009, council approved the submission of a joint application with the City of Westminster for $1.5 million in NSP funding to provide soft-second loans through our homebuyer program. It wasn't until December of 2009 that HCD gave final approval of the application and allowed us to begin the program. The housing market changed significantly from the submittal of the application in June and HCD approval of the program in December. The amount of inventory that was available to make this program a success has virtually vanished. HCD imposed deadlines requiring that we commit 75% or just over $1 million of our funds by March 31st, 2010. Because of lack of available inventory, only $80,000 in NSP funds have been committed thus far. We have been advised by HCD that funds will be recaptured unless we meet their commitment deadline or amend our existing agreement to commit 100% of our funds by June 30th, 2010. Staff proposes to submit an amendment to HCD that would allow us to use funding for acquisition and rehabilitation of foreclosed properties that will subsequently be sold to eligible homebuyers. The city intends to contract with Problem Property Resolution Team to acquire and rehabilitate foreclosed properties, which will subsequently be sold to eligible homebuyers. Problem Property Resolution Team will acquire foreclosed properties directly from banks through the National Community Stabilization Trust, a nonprofit organization that works with state and local governments and financial and lending institutions to facilitate the sale of foreclosed properties. Problem Property Resolution Team will be able to access foreclosed properties immediately after the completion of the foreclosure process and before they are listed for sale through traditional mechanisms. This will create a greater inventory of homes available under the NSP program and allow us to meet our commitment deadlines. A rejection of the amendment will most certainly result in HCD recapturing up to $1 million of our grant funds. Tonight, you are asked to conduct a public hearing to accept comments regarding an amendment to the NSP program and authorize the city manager to execute all documents necessary for submittal to HCD, including the Affordable Housing Agreement with Problem Property Resolution Team. This concludes my presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions that you may have.
I have a question. The Problem Property Resolution Team, what fee or how much do they charge? What do we pay them?
They're not asking for payment directly from the city. So the city will not be paying them anything. They will get their fees through the sale of the properties.
But does... Oh, okay, then, so if they...
On commission.
Okay. The sale of the property, and they would rehab, too. So they would get that reimbursement or whatever. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes.
Yes.
We're in conjunction with Westminster. So what are they doing?
They are actually taking the same item to their council meeting tomorrow night to amend their agreement as well.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
I'll move the issue.
Second. Okay, a motion, a second, and call for the vote.
Motion received, three yes votes.
Okay, number 10.
Mr. Mayor, item 10A is an ordinance for second reading. That's ordinance number 2772. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove adopting amendment to the contract between the City Council of the City of Garden Grove and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System to provide two years additional service credit.
Move the issue.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, three yes votes.
Okay, 11 matters, appointment to the planning commission. You know, one of the things I did not too long ago is I talked to our staff because I wanted to kind of get some of their input as far as the appointments to the planning commission. And a couple of things that I heard, you know, I hadn't really thought about too much earlier. The planning commission, as most commission appointments, when a new council takes office, you know, they each have the pick of whoever they want for that position. And what happens then? Sometimes people go on to other offices or maybe don't get re-elected or don't run again. And the next crew coming in, you know, makes their own appointments again. And in a way, what they said is it's somewhat detrimental because you have... There's a learning curve. And so people are on the planning commission, and then, before you know it, they're replaced by somebody else. And they think that... Or they feel that that's something that should be considered. And I think it has merit. And another thing, too, is that you have to look at the makeup of your community. And you have to look at, is there representation for everyone? Because there certainly should be. And in looking... And taking those two things into consideration, I'm going to nominate Joseph Pack for the planning commission.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Call for the vote.
Wasn't he on the planning commission, was?
He was. That's right. But he's had some experience, so that's one of the things that they were talking about.
Oh, they'll be fine.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, three yes votes.
Okay, Mr. Broadwater?
You know, we... One of the things that really strikes me that we have matters from the mayor at the very last thing, matters from the mayor and city council last. And that really doesn't give us a chance to address some of the things that are said about us and said to us at oral communications. And I would like to think about maybe moving that up after oral communications because a lot of times I like to comment on something somebody said about us tonight. And one thing tonight, a lady got up and said, she's been trying to meet with us and it's been denied and been denied. How hard it is to meet with me. I meet with people all the time. Anybody that calls Pam, she sets up an appointment and we talk with them. Drives staff nuts sometimes, but just the same, I meet with anybody that comes along. I'd like to have told that lady tonight. I mean, now also, I'd like to also told her that I do believe she has a lawyer that's representing this group that she's with. And that I probably couldn't talk to her without a lawyer being there. So which would put me right back in the same position as in the first place. But that doesn't... I mean, she's not here to hear this now. You know, nobody's here to hear the comments I have to say back to this. I'd like a shot... And I notice, Mr. Mayor, you do a very good job, by the way. I don't want to take anything away from you. But I noticed somebody said something nasty about you the other night. Boy, and you got right on them. You took advantage of your own ability to take care of a problem.
Actually, no. It wasn't... I didn't consider it nasty. It was a lie. And I wanted to point...
Certainly was a lie tonight. We heard tonight, but I couldn't...
Well, that's... You know, that's...
That's... Yes, I understand.
No, the point is when somebody accuses you of something and spreads the rumor to neighbors, you know, and that's why I wanted it... I wanted it clarified at that point. In fact, I even asked them to get the name of the person, you know...
Let me finish here, just a minute.
Well, no, wait a second. I'm in the middle of a sentence. No, I asked them to get the name, and I'd be happy... No, I asked them to get the name, and I'd be happy to sit down with those people, and of course, that hasn't happened. And then it was backpedaling, well, that's really not what they said, et cetera, et cetera. But I, I do think that there's some merit to what you're presenting, proposing, that we do move it, you know.
I like to have the ability to, to say something, I would defend myself, say something when they're, when they're all still here. I mean, what's the kid's name that beats up on Andrew?
Rod Powell.
Rod Powell said something tonight that I would have liked to have addressed. And goodbye, Rod, he's not here. But the truth of the matter is, we don't get a shot at that. I mean, it's over with it, and a lot of times I forget about it because 200 other things have happened since. I think that matters for comments to address what has been said, nothing wrong with it giving us five minutes or something after oral communication, just a, a comment.
Well, do you want to have it agendized, and we can discuss it and vote on it, or, or whatever?
Take that formal.
What does it take?
Takes a resolution.
Takes a resolution.
To change the order of the agenda. So if you want us to bring it back under, what do I have to do? Could they direct us tonight to do that?
Yeah, they can.
You can, you can direct us to.
Well, let's.
Agendize it.
Can do that, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll quit beefing about that. A, a very fine lady, Jolynn Fitzgerald, passed away from cancer this weekend. Last Saturday morning, she passed away. Her husband, Dale Fitzgerald, they've lived in this city since the early, early 70s. She had four children, and 22 grandchildren, and 33 great-grandchildren. They were, she's a, she was a wonderful woman. One time at a cake auction, she worked very, very hard on, on baking this beautiful cake, and I sold it for about $2. I was the auctioneer. She always reminded me of that, but.
Yeah, but $2 wasn't that much. I mean, it was a good amount in 1903.
Yeah, well, nice try. Anyway, I'd like you to add her to closing this evening, if you will, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Dana?
Yes. I wanted to see if staff could ask the web department to put the 211 slides onto our web, so our residents can get information on 211, educate them more on the services that are provided by 211. And I wanted to congratulate Buca de Pepo on the biggest spaghetti, right?
Wolf spaghetti, yes.
Wolf spaghetti. I just want to let you know, I go there a lot, and I love their interior in there. They have old movie stars, Italian movie star like Sofia Lorenz, for those of you who can remember Sofia.
Gina Lova bridges, isn't it?
Yes. And they have great pizzas, too, and the way they cook is very unique, and you get to pass through the kitchen before you get into the dining area. So it's nice to see how they come up with the food. Nice and clean restaurant, very nice. My kids like it, too. Also, I wanted to, there were some comments made about the RV park, it just, I'm not sure if some of it got taken care of already, because one person came up and said there were potholes, and another person came up and said, thanks for filling up the potholes. So if we could just go out there one more time, have a second look at everything, I think they would appreciate that. And I wanted to let everyone know, I went to the Lulac Scholarship Fundraising Dinner a few, probably about a week ago, and I was very proud of our Garden Grove, Lulac President, Benny Diaz. He put on a very nice event, and it was held here in our Garden Grove Community Recreation Room, and there were a lot of people showed up, 300 people, and they raised a lot of money for the scholarship. Congratulations to them, and they're, they support very, very excellent people, young people, and it's a very good cause. Also, reminder, everyone to buy in Garden Grove, and I advertised for Buca de Pepo tonight, so that's one place you need to visit and see for yourself the service and how great the food is. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thanks. I just wanted to circle back around on item that was on earlier tonight with regard to the Great Wolf Lodge and the McQuinney Themed Water Park Hotel Project coming in. I know the, when these items come up, the numbers are staggering, it's a several hundred-million-dollar project. And, you know, you turn on the TV and the news is bad, but like the mayor said earlier, the, the timing is absolutely correct on this. On, on the backs of Disney spending over $1 billion renovating the California Adventure Theme Park, which is going to reopen on or about 2012, we couldn't possibly bring this thing together fast enough to get it to open in conjunction with that. And Disney's going to spend a lot of millions of dollars marketing that relaunch when that comes. I tend to think the economy's going to look a lot different several years out than it does now. So right now, we're taking advantage of cheap construction, and the only difficulty is the financing. Our, our staff is very astute in finding ways of working through that, and inch by inch, I think, putting together a, a better deal for the city than what we started, so I'm really excited about it.
Thank you. I think most of you have probably read in the paper already that the Los Albeis is not going to do composting, which I'm sure makes everybody in West Garden Grove very happy about that. And I do want to thank Tony Flores and the West Garden Grove Resident Association for, for being involved in it. And I also want to thank Mayor Pro Tem Jones, because there were so many meetings, and there's so many things going on, that I, I couldn't make several of them. And he went in there and he pitched for the city and talked to the general and did everything that was conducive to helping them see the light and get rid of those nasty odors that we were plagued with for a while. I'd also like to adjourn the meeting in the name of Joanne Fitzgerald, Jo Lynn, I'm sorry, Jo Lynn Fitzgerald, and also for Bernie Seltz. Bernie passed away last week, and he was a longtime title officer and escrow officer with First American Title and several companies, but you probably remember him better as the founder, along with his wife, Mary, of the Thomas House Shelter. They just celebrated their 20th anniversary in Garden Grove, and Thomas House helped more than 250 homeless families transition to permanent housing. Bernie was also active in the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce, receiving the Man of the Year Award in 2008. A rosary will be held for Bernie at 7:00 PM this coming Thursday at St. Barbara's Church in Santa Ana, and the funeral mass will be held this Friday at 10:00 AM at St. Barbara's Church. And I'll adjourn the meeting till the next meeting, Tuesday, April 27th, 2010, at 5:30 PM.